I want to call the meeting to order.
Oh, so?
I got your place to go.
Um, let's call the roll.
It's Pledge of Allegiance first.
Pardon?
Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance, sorry. Okay. Betty isn't here to remind me.
It's okay, we'll go with you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's what it says on the sheet.
Okay, so I'm going to do the roll call.
On the sheet, by the way, it said to do the roll call first.
Chair Robarts?
Here.
Vice Chair Fitzgerald?
Here.
Board Member Lautowski is absent. Board Member Newsteen?
Is absent.
Is absent. Board Member Edmondson?
Present.
Board Member Hayes?
Here.
Board Member Clements?
Here.
Chair, we have a quorum.
Okay, I'd like approval of the agenda. Any deletions or revisions to the agenda?
I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed. Approval of the minutes of October 12th. Can I have a motion to accept those minutes?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes for October 12th.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, this is a public hearing to transmit the comprehensive plan evaluation and appraisal review of the amendments of the comprehensive plan goals, objectives, and policies and supporting documents. This is continued from October 12th. Do you want me to read them?
So I think you have the minutes before you, so we want to come back to the agenda.
Okay.
Thanks.
You're right. Okay. So the regular agenda. ANX 2301 PVC lift station parcel. This is to annex this parcel.
Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
So hi, I'm Gianni Gallier, the senior planner. I'm the project manager on this one. And we are annexing, it's a voluntary annexation request for four areas of unincorporated Palm Beach County. The total area is 23.08 acres. So the goal for this annexation is to reduce the size of the current enclave. And I'll pull up the Exhibit A location map. So I have the location map up, and you can see on there, Annexation 2301, that is the Palm Beach County Lift Station Parcel. So that one, it's along Lakewood Road just east of Jog. And we're annexing the .014 acre County Lift Station Parcel. It's the last piece of the interlocal annexation agreement. That was for the Lakewood Plaza West. So that's pretty much just to finish that one up and square that off. And then, so the next one is the Gardner Lane Denton Nursery. So we're annexing a total of 6.22 acres there. When you consider the Denton Nursery property and the adjoining Lakewood Drainage District Parcel that's to the south. And that's the same goal there, is reducing the size of that current enclave. And then you move west on that map, you have Annexation 2303, and that's actually the parcel adjacent here to City Hall. So it's the two city-owned parcels and the adjoining Lakewood Drainage District Canal to the south. And that one totals 12.86 acres. And the city parcel, you know, right now, that's kind of the plan is for the future EOC site there. And then to wrap it off, the Annexation 2304 on the top right side, that is an annexation request for a total of 12 parcels along Haverhill Road just south of Lakewood Road. And that's, you know, the goal there is the same, to reduce the size of that current enclave. And so, you know, the proposals, they meet the Florida state statute requirements, and they also meet our comprehensive plan requirements to, you know, for orderly annexation and to reduce the enclaves that are adjacent to the city boundaries. So the annexation requests, they were properly advertised in the Lakewood Herald, and then subsequently, the next day, we sent it off to the county administrator.
Excellent.
I have a question.
I was just going to say, anybody have questions? Go ahead.
The property along Haverhill, the pond, the water that's there, what is that, anyway?
The pond just to the south of where we're requesting, that was on...
That's not included.
No, that's not included. That's a county-owned parcel that they...
I drove it, and I was getting confused with, you know, what property it is that we're annexing.
Yeah, it's the property is just to the north of that pond, and then across Haverhill to the east.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's a retention pond for drainage for Palm Beach County with their project?
I couldn't... Well, then if Palm Beach County has that, shouldn't we be trying to acquire that? Or not?
It's within the future annexation boundary, so at some point, we can talk with them about it.
My other question is, I guess we are now, that little bit of the drainage area near the Denton Nursery, we're responsible for that now, for taking care of that, or is the county...
No, so it's not a maintenance responsibility, it's just that it would become within the city boundaries. So it would still, Lakewood Drainage District would still retain the ownership rights and therefore the maintenance responsibilities for those persons.
Thank you.
I have a question. Looking at the Gardner Lane Denton Nursery, the pot in white, that still belongs to Palm Beach County? Am I correct? On the map, the red pot is the pot we want to annex, right?
The outlined, yeah, the outlined color is where we're annexing.
And the other pot that's in white?
I think she's a little further west.
Yeah. The pots, the pot...
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay, so the Denton one is the one in pink, the 02 there. And the, you know, just above it, it's still unincorporated Palm Beach County.
That's what I was wondering.
And it's a different owner.
Why are we not going for the whole property?
So these are, they're different owners, and these are voluntary requests. So, you know, whoever, whichever annexations are on here, they requested to be within the city limits now.
Right. So these, as Gianni indicated, these are voluntary annexations. These are the requests that have come to the city. The property owners are requesting to be within the city boundaries. They do meet all of the statute requirements, as well as the city code requirements. So this is the formality for us to bring this before you, to make a recommendation to then the city council is the next step.
At this time, is it permissible for our audience?
In a minute.
Yeah, so this is under a regular agenda item. Technically, it's the public hearing items that take public. I did have an opportunity to talk to some of the residents that are here that I think want to make a statement.
Exactly.
It's totally up to you. I think it would be fine for us, in this purview, to open it up to them shortly to...
Yeah, I would like to open the meeting to public comments. Anyone who has a comment for or against, please come to the podium, identify yourself, and... Go ahead. I saw your hand up. Now is the time.
And then I think we just, in essence... What property are you referring to?
The ones she's talking to, the rectangle that's perpendicular to the Denton Nursery.
So I just want to put on the record that the city has received applications, signed applications and all of the application materials for this. I do believe for the Denton Nursery, do we have the representative here today?
I represent the property owner.
So actually, I'm sorry, if you don't mind, Chair, could we please have the applicant possibly come up, make a presentation, and possibly could answer?
Is that all right with you?
This on behalf of...
Would the applicant come to the podium, please identify yourself?
If you will mind, there's one other person that's assisting me with the whole project. He's calling it right now.
Okay.
And would it be okay to lay into the rocks?
We can go to other comments, and then maybe come back to this particular one, which is ANX 2302.
Does anyone have any other comments on 2301, 2303, or 2304?
My name is James Russell. I live at 4840 Misty Pines Trail, which is adjacent to the property which was previously owned by the Jewell family. We have a roadway behind us, which is 56th Avenue South, which is used to get to the landlocked property of the Jewells. I hereby wish to register my concern of green acres using that as a commercial ingress and egress to the property that they've acquired, especially when they have another opportunity, which is directly from your own property.
Excuse me, sir, which one is this? Is this 03 or 04?
It's 03.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, we are...
I see what you mean.
Misty Pines Trail, you have a Shell Rock Road right back to the east, and Misty Pines Trail is the next road east of that. We're on that. It is a Shell Rock Road. It is not maintained by anyone in the past other than the Jewells, and it is one lane wide.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Other than that, I'd like to register that I'm not particularly interested in being annexed by green acres. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any further comments on any of these other annexations?
The gentleman with the hat wanted to...
Yeah, the gentleman with the hat, since we're...
Waiting.
Yeah. The gentleman with the hat, if you would like to come now before they make their presentation, since we're waiting. Thank you for your patience.
That's okay. Yeah, how you doing? Forgive me, I work seven days a week overnight, so I haven't slept much today.
It's okay.
I am Robert Gardner. My parents are the gardeners who put in Gardner Lane 50-some years ago.
Nice. I'm sorry, sir, could you please state your full name and your address for the record?
Robert Gardner, 4963 Gardner Lane, Lakewood, Florida, 33463. And, I mean, it was originally Shell Rock. My grandfather and I, my dad, used to shovel Shell Rock on it. It's a private road. And this, after Lakewood Drainage District bulldozed our pool out of the ground and went through all of that, then Denton sold his property to CPM, this commercial property management. And now they're running like a 60-man crew out of there. Trucks coming and going, day and night, cars everywhere. It says it's a nursery, but it's not. The road's constantly blocked. They're constantly making a mess of the road that we all got together and finally paid to pave years ago. The county doesn't take care of the road. And I'm just trying to find out, like, what benefit they have doing this, and are they going to be accepted as a business now? Because it was a residential neighborhood, and they were simply a nursery who was letting people park vehicles there, was how they were getting away with it. It's just blatant. I mean, I've got pictures, there's six, you know, there's thousands of gallons of fuel. They're honking horns, trying to get to the fuel tanks every day. They're blocking the roads, loading and unloading equipment. We got the employees speeding down the road, trying to run us off the road in a hurry, coming and going. I'm just trying to find out what benefit there is for them to voluntarily do this, and are they suddenly going to become a business, and that's going to be acceptable? And we have no... I mean, we really haven't. We've called zoning and everything else, and they just shake hands with them and walk away. They won't do anything. I just want to make sure that we're not concreting the situation by allowing this to happen.
Thank you very much for your comments. Would you like to elaborate?
I would like to. Thank you, Chair, I appreciate the opportunity. I would like to note that the gentleman in the property for which they live at is not subject to the annexation. The parcel that we're talking about is 4964 Gardner Lane. Again, we indicated that we do have the applicant here. We do have it as a voluntary annexation, where the property owner has provided consent. They have been operating as a commercial nursery. They also have the maintenance vehicles for their Campbell Property Management Company that do park there. We are looking at continuing to allow the uses as they have been existing. And that would be part of what would go to council through the ordinance, acknowledging their current use, and that we would grandfather that use once they do annex into the city.
Thank you. Is staff recommending this?
Staff is recommending approval of all of the voluntary annexations as presented to you this evening.
And before I call on the owner of the property, the person who's going to make the presentation, I have just one other question. Do we vote on them individually, or do we vote on them as a group?
I'd like to take them individually, as they are on the agenda. It's just easier to present them all at once because of the nature. But yes, I would like to see if we could go through them individually, each agenda item, and you guys render your recommendation for each. Thank you.
I have a question. Yes, is this currently Lakewood?
It's within unincorporated Palm Beach County, so it's Palm Beach County, it's not within...
Okay, so it's unincorporated.
It gets confusing, because I know a lot of people take whatever your address is, the city, you know. But it is, yeah, it's unincorporated property, currently just within the county. Again, they have asked to voluntarily annex into the city, and we have done the due diligence with that. They meet the criteria, and the city is recommending approval of all of those.
Thank you. And the gentleman who wants to speak now on 2302?
The applicant of item number two, ANX 2302 Gardner Lane Denton Nursery. If there's anything else that you guys would like to add, the floor is yours. Yes, to the podium. Yes, thank you.
Hello, good evening. Kate DeWitt here, on behalf of Complete Property Management, who's the property owner there. We're happy to kind of give you some of the backstory, and then maybe answer some more specific questions if you have more specific questions about the application, if that works for the board. Yes? So we, the property is currently located within unincorporated Palm Beach County, as was described. The landscape nursery operations have been going on for the last decade. There is an existing approval with Palm Beach County for a special exception use that was approved back in 2016 for that use, when the property was originally purchased. And they've been operating cohesively under that approval for the last several years. In the more recent times, there have been operations that have changed. We've tried to work with the county to adjust, make those adjustments. And it was just clear to us, based on the location of the property, future development potential, that Green Acres was a much better fit for the property owner. And so we initiated that conversation with staff and with the city. And as part of furthering the goals of the city, to enclose these enclaves, because frankly, they're very difficult to deal with from a public safety perspective, stormwater, everything is just better to be in an incorporated area, just to make these businesses more successful in the long term. So that was the impetus for coming into the city.
Thank you. Gentlemen, do you have more to say on this item?
Yeah, I could acknowledge some of the comments just on the operations. I think there was some brought up that there's a lot of traffic throughout the entire day. I think we've tried to do a good job of limiting traffic to just in the morning, and then at the end of the day. We've also, you know, tried to work with those on Gardner Lane to pave the street if needed, to trim back trees. You know, we want to be good neighbors and work with everyone in that area.
I have a quick question for you.
I'm sorry, first, if you don't mind, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Jimmy Tight.
My question is, the vehicles that are leaving, that are coming and going, are they landscape vehicles from the nursery, or are they construction vehicles, or...
Yeah, landscape vehicles and pickup trucks, for the most part.
Okay, that's...
Part of maintenance operations with Campbell Property Management.
Exactly. So the wholesale nursery, as well as part of the maintenance.
Thank you.
They operate, the house that's there is office use.
Yep. Thank you very much for your comments. Are there any further comments on any of these items, 01, 02, 03, 04? Yes, please come up.
My name is Pamela Griffith. I live on Misty Pines. So the 56 Terrace property, you guys mentioned EOC, which I have no idea what that is. So I can't, I can't...
It's Emergency Operations Center. The city has plans to develop the property with an Emergency Operations Center.
And so that would just, like, it's not going to be, it's going to be like this structure, sort of?
It'll be a government building.
Government building, okay. The canal, we are, we are in the canal.
The Lakewood Drainage District now behind it.
What, it stays the same, is there. It just is now taken over by Green Acres.
It just becomes within the city boundaries. It's still Lakewood Drainage District-owned and maintained.
And the plan for 56 is not, like, we use it as a service?
There are no plans for 56. Currently, so this is where the confusion is, that road is used for ingress and egress purposes. And I believe that, my understanding is that there are easements granted to each of the property owners for that right, including the city's property. So those are not rights that are being removed from the properties. So, but as of right now, there's not a specific plan for that. When the plans are put together for development of the EOC property, then those things will be looked at for access and, you know, what, how the city needs to utilize the property. So, yeah.
So my question is, from what I understand, from listening to the people that have spoken, there's a road that is not necessarily a Green Acres road or a city-owned road, it's a private road, that they're using to enter and exit their property. Will that be still available for them?
It's actually, well, we can bring up the aerial, so it...
Am I correct, or no?
It will show you the aerial, so it's much easier to see. So currently, Misty Pines Trail is the main road that's used for ingress and egress to those parcels. However, 56 Terrace, you know, is there. It is a road. My understanding is that there are easement rights through the clerk of court records that provide rights and access to the city property, which Gianni's highlighting right now.
Right.
So they are referring to that road and the easements associated with that. And at this time, it doesn't have any bearing to the annexation. That is a right as to whether or not the city chooses to utilize that, or whatever, you know, agreements or plans are at a later date.
Still accessible, or would it be blocked?
The legal papers that allow it to be utilized as an access, and it gives, grants certain properties that right, would stay intact. That's a legal document that is not being severed from this parcel.
So they would be able to access their property. Please come to the podium.
Whatever rights they currently have legally through the, yes. This, our annexation has no bearing at all on anything to do with 56 Terrace. I think the concern is, because this is the city property, the city's going to develop it. Through the development, what does that mean for this roadway? And we don't have those answers right now. We know that there are legal access rights to not only the city property, it's our understanding, to the city property, but also to those other parcels.
I just wanted to clarify that they would still be accessible.
Yes, they have, they have access to their parcels. Yeah, it's really the city's parcel, and particularly the previous owner, that utilized that for access to their property. So, yeah. And we're not, so we have comment, we opened it up for comment. Typically, we don't do comment. So we're more than happy to answer any questions that anybody has. But this isn't the venue for that to take place. So I think we're, unless somebody else additional wants to make a comment, we need to close the comment period, please.
One final comment, then we'll close.
I will be very brief. My name is James Russell. I apologize for not including my question. My concern is that, as it is, as it has been for the last 35 years, the Jewells live on this particular property, and we see five cars a day going in and five cars a day coming out. Once it becomes a county property, if you use that on a daily basis, we're going to multiply that time, what? And it is right behind my property, this gentleman's property, another gentleman's property. So we're going to have a very busy road conceivably on our back, the backside of our property. Thank you.
I hear you. Okay, since there are no further comments, would someone make a motion that we vote on these four annexations?
Individually?
Yes, please. So the first one would be ANX 2301, the Palm Beach County Lift Station Parcel at 6297 Lakewood Road.
This is the first one, the small one at the top.
I make a motion that we approve ANX-23-01 PVC Lift Station Parcel.
A second then?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. I'd like to hear a motion for the except annexation of 2302 Gardner Lane Denton Nursery, 4964 Gardner Lane. Do I... Yeah, go ahead.
I make the motion that we vote on ANX 2302.
Gardner, yeah, Gardner Lane?
Gardner Lane, well, no, it's ANX 2302 4964 Gardner Lane.
Do I hear a second? No second. No second. So what's the procedure now?
It's a recommending body, so there needs to be an alternate motion, or you decide you're recommending to the city.
For another time? No? Motion fails.
So we'll note that you're not recommending that annexation to the city council.
Yeah, we're not, I guess we're not recommending that annexation. Okay, do I have...
Are we allowed to say anything?
Yes, ma'am.
My reservations are the same as the people that live there. If, in fact, the traffic is as intense as they are reporting, and the trucks are going back and forth and back and forth, and the speed of these people is too fast, then if certain rules and regulations might be put in place for the drivers when they get on that street to slow down and help out the people that live there, and I know they want to keep their beautiful area nice and remote. We all want to not see change and love our trees behind us and privacy. Things do change. However, perhaps some kind of...
Assurances.
Assurances from the owners that more care will be taken by the trucks coming in and out, or all the vehicles coming in and out.
So would you like to hear that commitment from the applicant?
Well, I'd like to hear something, so that the owners need to be...
Because this is, yeah.
And that's what this work of the board is about, is to hear, be good neighbors. We all know that, you know, progress does, there's changes as we move on. I'm a native of here, and I've seen this city grow unbelievably. But there's usually compromise between the owners and the people who are concerned on that street.
Yes. Sure.
Jimmy Tight from Complete Property Maintenance. So, yeah, I think the perception of the amount of traffic that's happening on a daily basis might be slightly over-exaggerated. might be slightly over-exaggerated. Like I said, the timing is very much condensed to the beginning of the day and then the end of the day. As far as speeding and driving, our company maintains a very serious safety policy. All of the vehicles that are going up and down that road have GPS telematics in all of them in our track daily for safety scores. So if drivers are speeding or coming in too fast in the morning, we're going to know and we're going to take action. You know, however, we can work with those around us. If, you know, they have reservations, we're happy to try to accommodate however we can. You know, we, we want to be good neighbors and, and, you know, coexist as well as we can.
Well, we want you to be good neighbors, too.
And we would like to annex this property.
So, yeah, so I would just like to maybe provide some clarification. I think it's great that we're hearing from the applicant and what they're committing to. And certainly, staff will continue to obligate them to that. This is for annexation, so whether, then their operations are not looking to change. So whether they stay in the county or they come to the city, it's the, that's an operational day-to-day item where it would be, you know, staff talking to them and seeing what could be done. But as far as the use of the property, they have legal rights to use the property as they have. And we would be looking to basically continue on with the same use that they currently have today.
So basically, what, what you're saying is what has been happening would not be changed whether it becomes Green Acres or stays unincorporated West Palm Beach.
Correct. If it stays unincorporated Palm Beach County, they're dealing with Palm Beach County local government. If it's the city of Green Acres, they're dealing with us, staff.
But the operations.
The, the use of the property.
Yeah, use of the property would be the same.
We're looking to allow them to continue to use the property as they have been utilizing it.
And we're only taking in the ones who are voluntary, asking to come to Green Acres.
Correct. Yes, they have asked and they meet the statute requirements. And the city is going forward to, to recommend for those parcels to be annexed as they choose, as they are indicating, desiring to us and choosing to do so.
I will.
I'll take a second. I will second the amendment that's on the floor then.
Okay. We have the motion and, and it's been seconded now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Me.
Motion passes. Annexation 23-03 4901 and 4977 South 56 Terrace. Do I, do you want to make a presentation or?
No, we're fine for you guys to go ahead and make recommendation on the next.
I make a motion that we approve ANX 23-03 4977 South 56 Terrace.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Motion passes. Okay, annexation 23-04 Haverhill Road, which by the way, in Massachusetts is pronounced Haver.
Yes.
That I tell you when it was founded by, okay. Do I hear a motion to annex those 12 parcels of land totaling 3.9895 acres?
I make a motion that we approve ANX-23-04 Haverhill Road.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Motion passes.
And then I'd just like to make a note that the next item you'll see in regards to all of these properties are staff coming back before you to assign future land use and zoning districts to these parcels. So you will see them come back to you next.
At another time. I, I hope you people have heard that in the audience, that it will be coming back another time about talking about future land use of the area. And basically, I, I think what staff has said, to just paraphrase, everything will stay the way it is. The difference is if you have a complaint, you would come to Green Acres to talk about it as opposed to going to West, yeah, I know.
Palm Beach County.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Also, I'd like to remind you that the February 5th is the council meeting. And they just take up our recommendations. So if any of you want to express your feelings again, it's okay to come February 5th.
Those are elected officials.
Yeah, because they are elected officials and they would, you know, have the power to whatever. So you might want to attend that meeting.
We just recommend to them.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, quasi judicial hearing on 23-02, the Pickleball Club. Do you want to make a presentation or?
Yes, actually, Gianni has this presentation as well.
Okay, so the special exception 2302, we have the special exception request for the Pickleball Club. They're requesting special exception approval for a private club and the associated outdoor recreational facilities and the ancillary club cafe, retail and events within RL3 residential low zoning district. So the site, it's located 2,300 feet south of the intersection of Melaluka and Haverhill on the east side. The current address is 5,200 South Haverhill, well, 5,208 actually. And they have a future address of 5,200. The applicant is here to make a presentation on the special exception, so I'll bring up his PowerPoint.
Um, since it's a quasi, I have to do the swearing in.
Sorry.
Those who will be providing testimony, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you affirm that this testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you, you may be seated. And please, Chair, if you can, ask the board members of any ex parte communications.
Has anyone had any ex parte communication in regard to this area?
No.
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 Thank you.
And anyone wanting to, any member of the public wanting to make a presentation? Please come to the podium.
The applicant, yeah.
Applicant.
Applicant. Good evening. Mike Miles with Dynamic Engineering, office at 100 Northeast 5th Avenue in Delray Beach, representing the Pickleball Club LLC, the applicant. So we're here to talk about pickleball. Thank you for the lead-in. The staff has been phenomenal to work with throughout this process, integral in, in this pursuit of a very exciting project. So with us, the project team consists of the applicant and developer, which is the Pickleball Club LLC. Here with us tonight is Nancy Jenkins, who's one of the most integral project managers to their whole entire program and platform, myself, Mike Miles, Dynamic Engineering. And we have a slew of different consultants assisting throughout this project and this process. So a little bit about the applicant and developer, Pickleball Club. It was founded in 2019, right before things got a little crazy in the world, with CEO Brian McCarthy and CFO Matt Gordon having a vision and really seeing how pickleball was taking off in America. And obviously, you know, being born and raised in South Florida myself, the hardest thing to do year-round is outdoor activity because it's so hot and sometimes it's rainy and this and that. So what they really pulled together was a product that offered both the indoor amenity space, the excitement of pickleball, with a little bit of the outdoor experience as well for those couple of weeks a year we get of the nice cold weather. And they had a really, really strong vision for this, this, this product. Obviously, pandemic hit right after they founded and they decided that it was, you know, it was too important to them to give up on. So they pushed through during all those challenges to open up their first, their first branch in Sarasota, which is the, the first one in Florida today. They're under construction for another one in Port St. Lucie now. And we're hopeful that we can bring this same product to Green Acres. So, you know, their mantra is to provide an outstanding member experience and that's exactly what they plan to do here in the city. So as Gianni mentioned, the project site is located between Trade Winds Middle and Diamond View Elementary, right across the street from Nautica Isles at the northeast corner of Nautica Isles Boulevard and Haverhill Road. A little bit of history on this parcel. It was developed with two single-family homes built in the 60s and the 70s, one of which is still somewhat up there today. It should be noted that the applicant has voluntarily coordinated with the fire department to coordinate a break-in entering practice, training, exercise on that building before we take it down. So we're hopeful that that can be accomplished in the next couple of months and provide a unique opportunity to, you know, city emergency services for, for that purpose. In 2020, this came before this board and the city council for a private high school and a house of worship, which was approved and subsequently, for whatever reason, did not, did not happen. So that's why we're here today. Before you use the proposed site plan, which primarily consists of a 16 indoor court facility, which has a mezzanine level and, you know, a small food and beverage cafe. So it's more geared towards lengthier stays, building community, not so much the people that see pickleball on TV want to try it once or twice. It's, you know, that's where they get into it. But then the, the sense of community that this club builds just fosters that relationship building over time, that real community engagement. With that, there are three outdoor pickleball courts that are covered via, you know, an awning type structure and two bocce ball courts. As you can see on here, we have a single proposed right-in, right-out access off of Haverhill Road, which has been blessed by Palm Beach County, as has the trip generation, which obviously is now staggered from the previously approved school to pickleball club that is just off-hours from typical school traffic, which should improve this, you know, area from what was approved before. The driveway entrance comes into the, the parking field that, that houses all the people. We have plenty of parking here for not only the special events that happen a few times a year, but day-to-day use, you know, should, should use, you know, maybe half of the amount of parking that we have. But we didn't want any sort of surplus to be, you know, impact any other neighbors. We have a, you know, sidewalk connectivity throughout the, the project, dumpster enclosure and dry detention pond all the way tucked in the rear. And loading area over on the east side of the building with, with enough landscaping to impress you, which you'll see in a couple of slides. So here's a rendering of the proposed development once it's completed. The, the color palette's been selected. It's part of their branding. And, you know, they're really trying to establish this look and feel at all of their different branches so they become a recognizable household name for, for pickleball. These are the building elevations that are part of your packet that you can probably see a little bit better on the screen than I can with the, the color palette, material selections that their Sarasota branch and all of their future branches are intended to have. So we're here seeking your recommendation to the city council for our site and development plan approval, along with the special exception used for the private club, considering we are in this spot-zoned RL3 low residential. We think it's a great spot for, for this type of a use and we're hopeful that we can seek that recommendation. The next few slides I have is basically just, it's in your staff report, it's in our justification statements, the different criteria that the site and development plan approval, you know, requires along with the special exceptions criteria, which consists of, you know, meeting all of the elements of the comprehensive plan, which, you know, primarily we, we really think that this product helps the comprehensive plan from a land use and open space and recreational perspective. I'm happy to dive into any of the specific elements of the comprehensive plan or the special exception criteria if there are any particular questions. That's what these next few slides are for, which, you know, consist of all the various criteria.
Do I hear any comments from the panel?
I was, I was just interested in how big a venue this is for events and that kind of thing. What, what portion of it is?
The gross square footage of the building is just shy of 42,000 square feet. And it has 16 indoor courts in it with a smaller mezzanine. The mezzanine area to, where people can sort of watch, play and, and hang out and whatnot is just under 4,000 square feet. So the, the facility is big because the courts are big. But there's, you know, a condensed membership gathering area inside.
Okay, and that, that's where any venue or event would take place?
I, I suppose so, that, along with the outdoor courts. Like, there's a decent outdoor fence court area as well. So I would suspect that it would be a combination of the two. And, you know, depending on the amount of people that are showing up, maybe they, you know, reduce a couple of the indoor courts for people to stand and gather, right? It'll kind of blossom as, you know, the membership increases and the popularity increases as well.
Are there, are there going to be outside people that are allowed to come to the events?
I believe that's the case, yeah. Depending on the event, yeah, they do invite members of the public. That's how they gauge, you know, interest.
So that, these are professional courts where you, we now seeing pickleball on TV. Are these the kind of courts? And is the setup in such a way that, that guests can come to watch, like people who would like to be playing but can't for one reason or another, and enjoy the, watching the sport of pickleball even if they don't play it?
So it's membership-based, it's a private membership club? So perhaps, Nancy, if you'd like to talk about.
What about with events?
Yeah, it depends on the event, I believe. You know, you can rent the space out. They do hold periodic events throughout the year for that purpose. So I don't know their exact event platform because it really depended on the, the demographics and the interest of the community. But I'm sure that's on the table.
Yeah, but, but it's not where you, if I understand correctly all of it, it's not where just anybody from the public can walk in and just sit and watch people play pickleball. It's membership-based, so you have to be affiliated if you're coming with the pickleball. Special events is an ancillary use for the club. And so that would, you know, have those that are members and non-members. But to come and watch pickleball.
No, I don't mean to come and just.
Okay.
Watch it. I mean, if there was an event.
Yes, and it's.
A competition.
Aired around that, then it would be a special event as part of their club that, that could happen, yes.
So that this facility is potentially, could be a, on the, you know, the circuit. Could it be on the circuit? For pickleball?
I don't think there are any plans for that to happen right now, but.
No, I don't mean now. There are some of us who are very enthusiastic about the sport and think.
The private club use, if granted the special exception, would allow that, yeah.
And then, you know, charge for, you know, guests to come in.
I'm sure that's, that's on their development program, I would think, yes.
Gianni, did you have comment?
I would like to hear that from the young lady that's sitting there, who's the general manager or whatever.
Nancy Jenkins, 5635 Piper's Way, Sarasota, Florida. And the 16 courts, we have different quality, different levels of play. You have beginners, we have youth, we have seniors, we have leagues. You can play anything you want to. Sometimes family members want to come and watch from the second floor, so they come. A lot of times, parents will bring their children, they want to watch them with a lesson. They go to the second viewing area. So that's why the upper area is mostly for viewing, but it's members that have to pay a fee, initiation fee and a monthly fee, and they have to sign up for a court. So we do have good control over the crowd and when they play and how much they play.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question concerning that it's a private member only. And I'm not sure that you would have a direct answer at this time, but I'm just wondering if this is going to be cost-effective for people that live here all the time or, you know, that it's not an elitist type? Or I'm just wondering.
Sure, yeah. The Pickleball Club in general does a very extensive demographic research and search for this type of a product to bring the most value to a community. If they only had, you know, the elite of the elite as their members, they would probably run out of business pretty quickly just because the, the intent is to bring everybody together, get everybody interested in the amazing sport of pickleball and provide a mechanism for, if they don't have it in their community or a public court or it's always, you know, it's always raining outside, whatever the reason is that people fall off of pickleball. The, the range of the membership fees are tied to the area that they're going in. So it should be accessible for most, if not all.
Okay.
Any further questions? Do I hear a motion to recommend the, the special exception for the Pickleball Club?
I make a motion that we, we approve SP-23-045, the Pickleball Club.
Actually, I'm sorry, we're one before that first. We're under agenda item number six first is a special exception.
We approve the quasi judicial public hearing SE-23-02, the Pickleball Club.
A second to that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now for public hearing, SP-23-02. Now for public hearing, SP-23-05, the pickleball club, and...
I'll make a motion that we approve, is there more of that?
Yep.
I make a motion that we approve SP-23-05, the pickleball club.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No?
So I just, I just want to be clear, does that motion include the, what's indicated in the staff report for conditions regarding the site plan?
Yes.
Yes.
The applicant has no objections to any of the conditions, so we appreciate that.
Motion.
Okay, so it includes, there's just one, yeah, that for the record.
Motion made and voted upon and passed. Okay.
Thank you very much, we're very excited.
Thank you.
Let's do it.
How are we?
When do you plan to start construction?
As early as June.
Go ahead.
So our next step is the city council hearing, obviously, and to secure our permits and start going. So we appreciate you, thank you.
And then we actually will be coming back to the board, to you guys, with some zoning language, text language, that further clarifies, you know, some of the, the special event, venue part to this, this club.
Okay. Appointment of Chair and Vice Chair. Can I nominate Danny Fitzgerald as chairperson from now on?
No.
I make a motion that we nominate Emily Robarts as chairman.
Nobody else is stepping up, Joan? Okay. Danny is Vice Chair.
I wouldn't take that gavel away from you for love.
Oh, I have lovely gavels.
You're holding it.
He's Robert's.
She accepts it.
Do you accept that?
Emily?
What?
Do you accept it?
Oh, yeah, I guess.
Then...
All right, I make a motion that, wherever it is...
Danny Fitzgerald be...
Oh, just, so it has to be separate and it has to be voted on, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
That Joan Hayes become Vice Chairman.
Okay.
I second that. All those in...
I didn't want to do it anymore.
Well, there's...
Second.
Hi, Joan. I'm okay.
She accepted.
All those in favor?
We have to vote on them separately, so that, or, I think, separately, so first is the motion for Chair and vote on it, and then...
The motion, the motion for me to continue as Chair, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Negative? Yeah, me, but it passes. And a motion for Joan Hayes to become Vice Chair, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. That's all set. Discussion item.
Steph doesn't have any, so...
This concludes the fact that I had, I have to be okayed, because my term was up.
I think, yeah.
I never heard if I was.
Yes, I'm going to send an email, already wrote myself a note, don't worry.
We got you.
Yeah.
I don't know if it...
I don't know. Oh, no, no, she needs to...
Okay, so the next meeting is February 9th.
February 9th.
And that's where you'll hear the language that I was talking about, zoning text amendment language. And then, yeah, so February 9th and then March 14th.
Okay, let me see. Excuse me while I just enter that, and that was...
I just have one other question. Where exactly do, does, going south, going south, does Green Acres end? Is that Lantana Road?
So it depends on, yeah, like, if you're on Jog Road, Haverhill, Milliteria...
We can bring it up, so you can take a look at it and see, yeah.
Because we have a list of restaurants that are in Green Acres, and there are two places, like Eggs, etc., and...
Oh, etc., which is outside. Whoever did the list may be going by the mailing address and not the city boundary ad, you know, city boundaries, because that's definitely not within the city, yeah. It's not even, we're not actually close to it, it's not within our future annexation boundary.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're on, are we where the Publix is?
No.
We don't know that's...
I have it.
Yeah.
I have it up.
Here's our current.
Okay.
Quick question, the March meeting you said was the 4th, that's, I believe...
The 14th.
14th?
Uh-huh.
Okay. And I believe city council meeting is March...
4th and the 18th.
Right.
So no February?
February 5th or something.
February, um, February...
February 9th is, is planning meeting, and council meeting is February 5th.
February 9th?
February 9th is PZBA, you guys, sorry.
That's a, a Friday.
And February 5th. Oh, it's 8th, 8th, sorry, 8th.
Okay.
And February 5th is council. There will not be a second council meeting in February due to the holiday.
What if you don't celebrate Valentine's Day?
Okay, so let me get this straight, February, oh, this didn't, this didn't change.
So February 5th is city council.
Yep.
February 8th is planning zoning board. March 4th is city council. March 14th is planning and zoning board meeting, and March 18th is the second city council meeting of March.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so further south, how far do we go?
So if you, okay, so over by Haverhill, we are just north of Lantana, and in fact, we will be going all the way to Lantana because the Able Lawn Mower site that Gianni's putting an arrow around, we have an annexation agreement with them, and we will be coming forward sometime in the near future to annex that property.
We don't have the property, or do we, across the street from them?
No, no, south of Lantana Road is outside of our future annexation area, so we don't actually have any future plans for annexing south of there.
I think I mean east of Haverhill, which, some gas station or something.
Yeah.
So the gas station is on the west, the current gas station that's being developed is on the northwest corner, and that is within, you know, a future annexation boundary, and so isn't the areas just to the east. And in fact, you know, that, the northeast corner, they have been in contact with the city. So, yeah, so we are actually looking at that area in there for annexation.
Good, all right. So how big is Green Acres now, bigger than six square miles?
You know what, we'll have to do the boundaries and see. Not sure about that. I'm not sure if it tips us over to six or not.
I was trying to add up the acreage and then divide by the, no, it didn't work.
We'll have to do our GIS exercise to actually...
Do you know the population of Green Acres now?
Was 43,000?
I thought it was 40, put a 45.
Forty-four, forty-five.
Yeah. More than, like, we're a beach.
Yes.
Which is surprising to everybody when I say it.
Yes, yeah.
I would like, I have one more, I have one more comment, and that is, I drove around, and I haven't been down there in a long time, the original section, and what a nice improvement is going on. That clock looks so great.
Yeah, and Swain, all of the improvements with the sewer, subject to sewer project, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks, I'll, I'll pass that along, those comments along to Andrea and Public Works.
They put the sidewalk in yesterday.
Oh, okay, good.
And they did a fantastic job.
Good.
We were, I was worried about having to walk down the street and park my car. We parked our driveways every night, they let us out.
Oh, good.
No problem, the crew was fantastic.
Perfect, okay. Yeah, we'll definitely relay that to both Andrea and Public Works.
It really is exciting, you know, to see that, and even a lot of the new construction, and even the original houses that are there.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and we, we continue to have inquiries and people pursuing parcels to redevelop, so...
Very nice to see that happen.
Not only the redevelopment of some of these cute little houses, but the preservation of them, the...
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Of them.
And the house that we approved about two months ago, about that driveway in front of the property, he did a good job.
Oh, yes, the multi-family, yes.
He's finished last week, and he's got his bushes out there now.
Fourth in Swain.
Yeah, he did a great job on it.
I have two questions. First of all, when will Chickasaw Road project be started?
So they're finalizing the agreement, they did get the bid back as to how much the road would, would be, so they're going through the final, so they're waiting, you know, it's, it's, it's close.
That's great.
I don't have a definitive timeframe, but it's close.
That's number one, and number two, the church.
Which one?
The church, the church on Jog Road.
We have a couple that are in the same boat.
Next to Chickasaw.
Yes.
Eight years now?
So they, they, yes, so I think as you saw, code enforcement had worked with them to get the outdoor, you know, site cleared up, they have continued to obtain their permits and get inspections on their permits, so each time that happens, it gives them another 180 days, based on state statute and the building code provisions. So we're continuing to monitor, and, yeah, we want to move them along as, as quick as we can. So it's all, all contingent upon the work that they do and passing inspections, and that gives them that time.
You should, you should plan a prayer meeting.
Yeah, oh, Joan, that was...
We need to change the requirements, and their grandfather didn't, okay, their grandfather didn't, I understand that.
Yeah, they have a special exception for house of worship.
So that we don't get stuck like this again, because, you know...
Yeah, yeah, and it's hard with the, the rule about giving them the 180 days, once you pass an inspection, that's, that's the hard part, because they wait, and then they do. It's state statute, building permit, code requirement, or code provisions.
And we're going to forget about the roof?
No, the roof is, it's on our list, and, yeah, yeah, they'll have to make good on that, and we're, we have it on our log, we haven't forgotten about it.
I mean, that's the one question that I get from everyone, what's the story with the church? What's the story with the church?
Yeah.
Me too.
Yeah. I, I'm thrilled with the way the Skate Palace worked out. I, I know it's, a lot of your neighbors are not thrilled with it.
Oh, well, just the color.
Get used to it.
The color is a lot.
Oh, I like the color.
Are there color codes for...
And the new Shake Shack thing that opened up, the, in, in one of the shopping centers, I guess, was having an opening.
Shake Shack?
Shake, some kind of...
Is that the Green Acres Plaza?
Yeah, I think so.
The Smoothie Place.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember the name of it.
I don't remember the name.
Smoothie King, I think.
I, you know, I like to see new businesses.
No, that's going, oh, no. That's by Pizza Hut, that's Smoothie King.
When we getting our Chick-fil-A?
They're, they're actually coming through the process, so...
Wonderful.
They took down the building.
Well, since you guys, you know, it's already come before the board, we'll make note to let you know when they're further along in the process, so you have an idea of what's happening and when.
When was the fire in the River Bridge Center the other day? It was on the news, and it said a restaurant, but it didn't say what restaurant.
I thought it was Pete's Place, but it wasn't.
It wasn't?
It was going that way, but I didn't see it.
Do you know what it was?
They said they went to look, but if they couldn't find it, they couldn't find it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was on the news, you know, Green Acres and the River Bridge shopping center.
Yeah, I think it was minor, and we'll have to look, yeah.
The ones that are definitely...
Sure.